Please find a seat. Thank you. I will now call the meeting to order. Please join me in remembrance of the twenty-second anniversary of September eleventh. I invite everyone to join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to announce that the board had an executive session on August thirty-first at eleven a.m. to discuss pending litigation and also potential purchase of real property. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting?
So moved.
A second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Reports. First up is the police. Chief Alexander.
Thank you and good evening. For the month of August, two thousand and twenty-three, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented one thousand sixty-six entries in the police department call reporting system. During the reporting period, the officers issued one hundred fifty-four traffic citations. They investigated twenty-five motor vehicle crashes and they arrested seventeen individuals. Additionally, for the month of August, the department members conducted two motor carrier details at the weigh station, resulting in five hundred six commercial motor vehicles being weighed, six of which were found to be overweight. During the details, the officers also performed five inspections, requiring five vehicles and one driver to be placed out of service. The officers were assisted by a member of the Nether Providence Police Department during both details. Sergeant McBride conducted three additional commercial motor vehicle inspections during his normal workdays, resulting in one driver being placed out of service. Year to date, the officers have documented eight thousand nine hundred eighty-two incidents in our call reporting system. They've arrested one hundred fifteen individuals. They've issued one thousand forty-two traffic citations, two hundred ninety-nine written warnings. They've investigated two hundred twenty-one motor vehicle crashes and to date, they've weighed twenty, or I'm sorry, they've weighed five thousand three hundred forty-six commercial motor vehicles. And I also wanted to report that in August, we did have one Narcan exposure as well.
Thank you. Pressure.
Good evening. Through the month of August, in the general fund, we've collected just under eighty-four percent of our budgeted revenues and have spent just under sixty-five percent of our budgeted expenditures.
Okay, great. Thank you. Public works. Mr. Greenlee.
Yes. Thank you. For the month of August, the daily average flow to the Downingtown Treatment Plant was one million four hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five gallons per day, and there were no new connections due to the Dara or Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant. At the Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant, the sludge holding tank was cleaned and the unused clarifier was pumped down in preparation of some needed tank repairs at Eagleview Treatment Plant. Weather permitting, the tank repair should be completed by the end of November. For the month of August, the township received two point zero six inches of rain. Normal for August is about three point nine. We've actually about averaged out for the year. The department responded to one hundred and twenty-four P A one calls for the month of August. And also rebuilt and repaved a large section of Filmon and Dowling Forge, the intersection that washed out during our storms in the end of July. Large folders were placed at the sides and end of that road to help prevent potential future runoffs. The department was also out on August seventh to respond to several reports of downed trees in the area. Trees were cleared from Sharp Lane and Dowling Forge. There were also repairs made to storm-damaged asphalt on Taylor Road and Wyndham Drive. The department was also out to repair sinkholes on Peck Road and Beach Street, as well as the department completed all needed truck and equipment maintenance and state inspections for the month.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just comment that Chairman Bowman and I were, happened to be on Filmon Road this weekend. It looks really nice. I think the repairs look really good.
Fire marshal.
I'm going to do the fire marshal report tonight. The building department for the month of August issued one hundred and thirteen permits for construction activities. A total of one hundred and forty-five inspections were conducted, a total of forty-two fire code inspections were conducted. Fifty-four use and occupancy certificates were issued, and the fire marshal responded to twenty-six incidents during working hours and conducted three burning complaints.
Okay, thank you. And for the Lionville Fire Company?
Lionville Fire Company responded to sixty-seven incidents during the month of August. Thirty-nine of those were in Euclid, twelve in Upper Euclid, four in West Pike Lynn, and twelve in other municipalities. The total year-to-date is four hundred and fifty-nine.
Thank you. And Euclid ambulance?
Good evening. Euclid ambulance for the month of August, we responded to one hundred and twenty-two calls within Euclid Township. Year-to-date, one thousand twenty. E-truck, which was re-chassis-ed, is now fully in service, just in time for D-truck to be out. It's done. So we're hoping later this year, we'll be able to send one of the other ones out for re-chassis. I'm happy to report that we are one E M T shy of being fully staffed with full-time employees, a tremendous feat from where we were a year ago. And we really appreciate the support from the community and from the supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the reports as presented?
So moved.
A second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Just had one comment and question for Chief Alexander. Am I correct that today is the last day to sign up for Citizens Police Academy? Okay.
And at the moment, we don't have enough participants that we feel like we can continue long for this year, so we're looking at the potential for extending it if we possibly can. But we may have to consider waiting until next year again for lack of participation.
That's all. Thank you.
You heard it here first, folks. How do people sign up? Where can they find a sign up? Do they contact the police department?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, if folks are interested, they can contact the police department. An application will be sent out to them, and then they will communicate directly with Lieutenant Evans, and she will go through the process with them. Again, it's a, we believe it's a fantastic program. It certainly gives folks a clear insight on exactly what we are doing here in our police department in Euclid, and will give people a better understanding of what law enforcement really is doing across the county and across the country as well, which we think is really important. So if anybody is interested, please don't hesitate.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the public about the reports? And I'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Also, I forgot to mention before we go on, this meeting is being recorded and the meeting will be posted on YouTube. It's also being held hybrid, and there are people joining us online. The first item of business is the approval for hiring a new police officer. Go ahead.
Thank you and good evening. So as you know, we have, we are aware that we have four officers from our department who are retiring at the end of this calendar year. With your approval, we began in earnest back in February of this year in listing those jobs and then entering into a hiring process. We began that testing process in March, and we have three candidates at this point who have made it through, and they're in varying stages of the process. And so we are, we are getting very close. I will be asking for the approval for the hiring of one of those candidates this evening. For the folks who are in the room tonight, it's a, it's a lot to ask of the candidates to engage with us in the process to become a police officer. We require that they have already been through the academy, that they have one year of experience, and then when they apply and start testing with us, they're required to do a physical fitness test, a national police officer written test. They do two sets of oral interviews. Some of them are situational. Some of them are to get a better understanding of who the candidate is. Once they go through their oral interviews, they are engaged in a thorough background investigation, and then they, they go into a psychological exam. They do polygraph testing, fitness testing with a doctor, and drug testing. And at the culmination of all of that, if we're in a position to do so, then we would hire them with our department. I'm happy to report that one of our candidates, who has just, because of the timing of things, gotten through this process. To this point, he has completed all of the testing, and his name is Kai Kennedy Green. He is originally, and continues to live in Chester County here, currently works in Delaware County where he's been employed with Police Department there for five years, and we couldn't be happier to have engaged with him in this process. And for that reason, I'd like to seek approval from the board this evening to approve the hiring of Kai Kennedy Green with a potential tentative start date of September twenty-fifth. Again, one of the reasons that we're trying to hire our officers in before the other officers are leaving is because even though they have experience, they have worked elsewhere, they will still need to go through a twelve-week field training program with us so that they can learn how we're doing things here. And then even after they are released from that program, they are still on a year of probation as we continue to manage and look at how they're doing. So again, with that, I can't tell you how much I thank you for engaging with us in this process as well, and with your approval, we would love to ask Kai to come on board.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the hiring of the new police officer Kai Kennedy Green?
So moved.
A second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Would just comment that having met Officer Kennedy Green, I'm very excited to welcome him to the Euclid Township Police Department.
Absolutely.
I second that. Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item of business, consider request for additional contribution to the Euclid ambulance company. Does somebody from the ambulance company want to come up?
So as Kathy, I think, pointed, did you guys all receive the letter from Kathy? So we are, for two months now, we have been without H V A C in half the building. We have started to get estimates. We, just that alone took a tremendous amount of time. Try to get people to come out that wouldn't charge just to look at it. We are, they are recommending that both units be replaced. They're of the same era. So we're looking at, I think the cost they ask for here from Euclid is ten thousand. We've asked all the other supporting townships as well for their portion.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the request for additional contribution in the amount of ten thousand dollars to Euclid ambulance company?
So moved.
A second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Nope. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Yep. Thank you. Item number three, park and recreation recommendation. Bill LaBarge from ex-officio to voting member. We recently had a member of the Park and Recreation Committee resign, and we'd like to appoint Bill LaBarge, who's already on the committee and going to meetings, and he's in an ex-officio position. We'd like to move him to voting member. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Nope. Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item of business is snow contractor bid. Permission to proceed.
Katie. So the bid opening for this was September eighth, and that was the second time we went out to bid. We again received no bids, so at this time, the township will now reach out to contractors to fill that, fill those spots for plowing.
Okay. Can I get a motion to allow permission to proceed with the snow contractor?
So moved.
A second.
Bid without a bid? Any comments or questions? Nope. Any comments or questions from the public? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item of business, Tedjukoma Senior Park Landscaping Bid Results.
So the bid opening for this was September fifth. The township received one bid from K M C Property Maintenance for thirty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-six thousand dollars of that is for the landscape installation, and nine thousand is the guarantee maintenance allowance. We did receive a letter from Tharkoff Design and Planning. They reviewed this bid and they sent a letter recommending that the board award the contract.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can I get a motion to award the bid results of the Tedjukoma Senior Park Landscaping Plan to, I'm sorry, what was the name of the?
The name is K M C Property Maintenance.
K M C Property.
They're out of Chester Heights, P A.
Okay. Can I get a motion to grant the bid to K M C Property Maintenance for the Tedjukoma Senior Park Landscaping?
So moved.
A second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Nope.
Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Looking forward to seeing some landscaping at the new senior park. Item number six, the resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash seventeen, establishing the minimum obligations for pension plans.
So this is an administrative resolution that the township passes pretty much every September that identifies the minimum obligations of the township for both our uniform and non-uniform pension. For two thousand and twenty-four, the township will be budgeting five hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety from the state's pension contribution for the police pension plan. Budgeted for two thousand and twenty-four, the administrative costs from the police pension in the amount of forty-nine thousand four hundred, and the minimum obligations for the non-uniform pension plan for two thousand and twenty-four will be two hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash seventeen, establishing the minimum obligations for pension plans?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Nope.
Any comments or questions from the public? Did I hear a yes? Oh, I'm sorry. In that case, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item of business is the Rossi Track, ninety-six West Devon Drive, extension request for preliminary final land development plan?
Yes, as you're aware, we had received a land development plan for a shopping center on the Rossi Track, which we had until the end of September to make a decision on. I received a letter from Commonwealth Engineers requesting an extension until March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, so they can explore other options.
Okay. Can I get a motion to grant an extension to the property on ninety-six West Devon Drive, the Rossi Track, for land development extension?
Moved.
A second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item of business is the hearings. I'm going to give it over to Mr. Freed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have two hearings tonight. One is a continuation and one is a new hearing. So with regard to the continuation, this is a continuation of a rezoning hearing that we commenced at the last Board of Supervisors meeting in August related to Calvary Chapel of Chester Springs at two one seven, two one nine, and two two one Dowling Forge Road. The council for the church, as well as council for the township, has been discussing if there's mechanisms that we might be able to, to work out so that there's some understanding as to what the proposal will be in the future regarding the area that's being converted from residential to commercial. I think the, the thought is we should, we should at least, you know, go down that road and have discussions which would require a little bit of time. So I think the plan is to continue the, the hearing. One more meeting, at least, you know, till, to the, to October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, at which time we'll recommence the hearing. I know there was potentially one examiner that was only available tonight that we were going to hear from.
That's right. One of the neighbors, good evening. I'm Eric Christocks on behalf of Calvary Chapel, Chester Springs. One of our neighbors is here tonight, Mr. Myers. He did agree gratefully to come tonight and speak in support of our application. So I did want to make him available for the board's benefit this evening.
So I think we can, we can hear from the gentleman, and before we adjourn for the evening and then continue it to the next.
Hi, my name is Jerry Myers. I do own property next door to the proposed change. Frankly, I'm in full favor of that move. The main reason being water retention. It's my understanding, according to the plan, that water retention will be erected as best as possible. Right now, we have heavy rains. It's like a river coming that way, and if there's a retention over there in the direction, moving it back towards Eagleview into that lower green, I think that would be the best thing for everybody, for myself. And unfortunately, Matt, my neighbor, couldn't be here tonight. He had a business situation that prevented him from being here. But I have, I have no objections at all. I think the buffer will make a nice difference for aesthetically between the residential and the commercial, and the water retention is a, is a big win for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll also note there are a handful of people affiliated with the church here tonight who would like to express their comments as well. Out of respect for the court reporter, and I understand you have another hearing immediately following this, I would ask that they keep their comments for public comment. That way, we're not clouding the record with them if that's acceptable to the board. If you'd prefer to take their comments now, they'd be happy to make them. I'll just leave it up to your solicitor, which one you would prefer.
Yeah, it's, either way is fine. I mean, I had understood from our conversation that we were only going to have the one comment and then continue the hearing. But it's, it's really up to the, it's up to the board, whatever their, their preferences.
Um.
Either is acceptable. We can, I mean, what we can do is for tonight, let them speak during the public comment period, and then if there's something that you feel should be on the record when we reconvene, we can put it on the record.
That would be fine.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll adjourn the hearing and move on to the next hearing, and then we will, at, at the end of the meeting, we will have a public comment period. At which point, people can comment on anything, including the, the Calvary Church application. So the next hearing is the Tilson Infrastructure and American Telephone and Telegraph application relating, and this is the applicants are requesting a conditional use hearing to construct and operate a wireless telecommunications, telecommunications tower consisting of a one hundred and sixty-foot-high monopole and associated equipment on property located at exit three twelve of the Pennsylvania Turnpike, I seventy-six, commonly referred to as the Downingtown Interchange. A T and T has asked Tilson Infrastructure to develop, construct, and own a technology suitable tower upon which A T and T would lease space for its broadcast equipment, thereby allowing A T and T to remedy the service deficiencies that currently exist in the area. The site is located in the township's P I C zoning district. A wireless telecommunications tower is permitted upon approval of a conditional use permit and variance for height according to the township zoning code. The, the applicants are also seeking a variance to build the tower in excess of a hundred and twenty feet tall, which would go in front of the township's zoning hearing board. Is there anyone from the applicants here this evening? Would you like to come up to the microphone and, and state your name?
Good evening. Whoa. Very graceful, was it? My name's Doug Morrison. I'm a project manager for Airmen Network Services out of Syracuse, New York, and I'm appearing on behalf of Tilson Infrastructure for their application for a hundred and sixty-foot unmanned wireless telecommunications, as you spoke at the I seventy-six, three twelve exit.
So I do have, before we, we move further with the hearing, I do have some board exhibits that I'd like to mark for the record. Exhibit, Board Exhibit One is the application letter dated July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Board Exhibit Two is the public notice to the Daily Local of this hearing. Board Exhibit Three is the proof of publication in the Daily Local that ran on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and September fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Board Exhibit Four is a budding property owner's notified of the hearing. Board Exhibit Five is Tilson zoning drawings, which consists of thirteen pages. Board Exhibit Six is F A A Determination of No Hazard to Air Navigation Letter dated August fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Board Exhibit Seven is the F A A Antenna Structure Registration. Board Exhibit Eight is the E B Wash Review Letter dated August thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And Board Exhibit Nine is the Draft Planning Commission Meeting Minutes dated September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do you have any objection to, to any of those exhibits being, coming into the record? So because this is a conditional use hearing, there is the ability of interested parties to, who might be impacted by the use, to seek party status. What party status allows a person to do is to fully participate in the hearing. It allows them to cross-examine witnesses, present a case, and testify on the record. However, you do not need to be a party just to comment. If you have a comment you'd like to make about this, you don't have to be a party. There will be an opportunity for the public to, to comment on this application at the end of the hearing. The one thing to keep in mind is if, if you're not a party, if this is something that really is a, a direct effect on you, if you're not a party, you don't have the ability to appeal if you're unhappy with the result. The appeal would go to the Court of Common Pleas in West Chester. Although just because you are a party doesn't necessarily mean you're going to be able to appeal. The standards are a little looser here at the township than they would be in the court. But if, if you're not a party, then you, you essentially waive your right to even be able to appeal. You can still make comments. And there's a twenty-dollar fee for administration if you want party status. So with all that said, is there anybody here tonight that wants party status with regard to this application? Okay. So then, at this point, I'll turn it over to you if you have any presentation you'd like to make.
Well, I, I think we, we uploaded the zoning drawings, and just to give you an aerial overview, it's a pretty straightforward project. We're, we're in the Pennsylvania Turnpike right away. The lease would be with them for their property. Tilson Infrastructure would own it. A T and T is the carrier that's interested in fixing a few deficiencies that they have with the F C C. And this, their R F engineers indicated that this would be an ideal location to not only serve and improve capacity, but also coverage for their network. We're using a the exit as a staging area, and we would simply put a culvert through the existing stormwater drainage with a thirty-foot-wide easement back to a hundred-by-hundred-foot compound. Erect the tower, and the interior of the dotted lines that you can see is to simply the compound. You've probably seen them if you've drove them past. It's going to be a chain-linked fence with razor wire on the top, only to protect so animals don't get in it or any stranger. Any stranger. Well, I don't know why anybody would be walking in this area, but certainly is not a, um. An, an issue for people, pedestrians, if you will. So again, it's pretty straightforward. It's, it's, uh, it's an unmanned tele- telecommunications facility. We've. Taken the liberty of designing it at one sixty, so we might also serve the other carriers if they found a need. Questions, concerns?
So does the, does the board have any questions or comments?
Um, I don't have any questions.
One question. You said AT&T is the carrier that's going to be utilizing the pole. Uh, do you notice this include any improvements to their first net coverage? Or their emergency response capabilities?
Well, I, I don't know the specific answer to that question, but when they approve, when. Because of the amount of hits, we call them on, on a certain tower. Gordon Road, for instance. So apparently they're having a high volume of traffic in that area. So what happens? You either. Lose a call or you don't get it at all. So when that happens, the RF engineers, radio frequency engineers. Sit in their thing and say, okay, how can we approve the network? Well. If we put something here, does it work for everyone? Does it improve our capacity? Does it in- improve our coverage? So. The answer to your question, I was going to tell you, yes, that it somehow along the line that is going to get a little bit better. It's just going to improve the network, the entire network, not just that little area.
And was there any interaction with any of the neighboring cell towers as far as like? Does, does AT&T not utilize any of the other neighboring towers?
Yeah, they do.
They do.
That's, that's the capacity issue. Where they're at right now is overloading, if you will. So they have to figure out a better way to fix the network. So this is, this is their solution.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a, a question about, can, can you explain, um, how, how are we handling a situation of abandonment? Uh, and, and if, if for whatever reason in the future, maybe technology isn't, is no longer, is something we need, um.
We'll bond whatever you want us to bond.
Okay. Okay.
If you want ten thousand, twenty thousand, whatever, we can bond that.
That's acceptable or township? Yep, okay. Okay, so, good. I don't.
There any other?
That's all.
So is there any public comment? Can you, can you come up to the microphone and introduce yourself?
So my name is Susan Kiesling, and I'd like to know, I may have already missed my opportunity, but how do you, what qualifies someone as a party?
So someone who would be a party, uh, and you, and you haven't missed your opportunity, we can still allow you to.
Okay.
If, if it's something, it's so, and y- you have to be directly affected. Um, it's that, that is a bit of a legal standard, um, that I, I don't want to start giving you legal advice, but. Um, it generally, it's, it's a, you're somehow directly affected by the proposal. Um, and, um, usually it has to do with how close you are. To, not always, but usually how close you are to the, the area where the work is being done.
Okay.
Uh, like if you're adjacent, if you're adjacent property owner, if you received notice. That's usually a good indication that you're, you could be directly impacted.
Okay.
Um.
Well, I would like to be considered, so I, whatever process I need to go through to be a party, I would definitely like to be.
So tell me what, what is your, what is your name?
It's Susan Kiesling.
Can you spell that?
K-I-E-S is in Sam, L-I-N-G.
Okay, and where, where do you reside?
I reside in Lion Gate.
And how close is where you reside to this proposed?
Maybe half a mile, mile. But my, so here's the thing, it does directly affect me because that cell tower is going to release. EMFs that will affect my family. And I would like to be a party, to be a part of that hearing, and also to be able to present evidence now that I was not aware of this.
Well, this is the hearing.
Okay, this is the hearing. Well, unfortunately then I'm not, I'm unprepared. I wish I was more prepared for it because. There's plenty of evidence, there's plenty of research about the medical, the biological effects of having something like that with. I'm gathering that it's going to be carrying five G is my guess. And I also would like to know whether or not, like I heard you say that it would impact or improve a little bit. Can that be quantified? And I'd like to know, I'd like to actually have data to say, okay, if you're saying that you're building this thing. And it's putting residents in the area at risk, potential risk. I'd like to know, what are we talking about in terms of?
All right, so let's be, let's go through the party status piece first and then. Uh, you know, assuming that you become a party, you will have an opportunity to ask.
Great.
Your question. So my question for the applicant is, do you have any objection to this person becoming a party to the action?
No, not theoretically, no, but I'm not an attorney either, so I'm, I'm gonna have to leave that. Um. If I have to. Hire an attorney to do this, we will, but. We'd rather.
Well, it's, I mean, it's, I don't want to tell you how to run your case. It's.
Why would I object?
Well, I, I, i- if you feel that you need more time to consult with an attorney, we can adjourn the hearing for this evening. Uh, and give you time and you can come back next month and we can do it then. I don't, I really don't want to rush you. Um, if you feel you need the time to, to consult with an attorney.
Well, then we'll adjourn.
Okay. Um, so what we're going to do, um, is, is before we adjourn, is there, is there anyone else who would like to seek party status tonight? And, and, uh, Ms. Kiesling, before, I'm sorry, before you leave, could I, could I actually get your, your specific address?
Sure. It's three eight zero eight. Um, Devon, I'm sorry, Davis Court, Chester Springs, PA.
Davis Court?
Davis Court.
And your reason for wanting to intervene is because of the, the.
Concerns that I have about the effects of. The EMFs that would be emitted from the tower, yes.
Okay, and is there, is there any, I just want to make sure we have the record.
Sure.
Sure, with all the reasons that, so that, so I'm going to take it under advisement tonight and consider it. Um, are there any other reasons?
No, that would be the primary reason.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
I- i- is there anyone else who would like party status tonight? All right, so with that, then, unless the board has any additional questions that they'd like to ask, uh, we will. We can adjourn for this evening.
Maybe I can help solve this issue now. The, the RF engineer is going to run an emission test that we do it for every. Piece of property and every site that we have. The FCC and FAA FCC will allow you a certain. Let's just say a hundred degrees. It's going to be probably less than ten. And it's also going to be a hundred and sixty feet in the air, which nobody's going to climb up that tower. And s- sit in front of that antenna. So the chances of any of that happening is miniscule. You get more emissions standing in front of your microwave popping popcorn than you do from the cell tower.
Mrs. Kiesling, I'm assuming that that does not resolve your request to be a party. Okay. Um, I, I understand that. I appreciate you, you making that statement for the record, and that's obviously, um. I, I realize you, you, we, we sort of morphed into testifying and you've been making statements. Unsworn, so probably, um, we can swear you now and you can make your, and we can cover it now, or we can wait till next.
Yeah, this way, because.
Okay, that's fine. And then we can do it. I'm sure you might want to prepare something now that you know what the issues are. Um, so with that, we will, we'll adjourn tonight's hearing, um, and we will continue it on October ninth. And, and if for some reason.
Yeah, I've, if he's not available, what's the next one? And is it the first Monday of every?
Yes, yes. So for now, for now, we'll, we'll adjourn to October ninth. If for some reason on the ninth. We have to adjourn still further, we'll deal with it then. We may. Um, i- if you, if you have an attorney, if you could have him reach out to me and I can give you my information. Because we may need, um, we, we've. We, from the time that we actually start the hearing now, we have, there is a, there was a clock to start the hearing, and now once the hearing starts, there's a clock. To finish it, and I want to make sure if we need additional time that we go through the proper channels to get the extensions we need to. So. All right, well, we'll thank you. All right, so we're going to adjourn. I didn't hear.
She doesn't need to stick around for other public comment.
Um, I believe the public comment, and I'm going to ask, no, I don't, I don't, I think, I believe the public comment this evening. Will just be regular public comment, will not be part of the record. So.
So you're free to go.
Your excuse.
Um. That concludes the business. I'm going to go ahead and read through the announcements before we open up the meeting, uh, to the public for comments. Uh. Wednesday's at nine thirty. Yogan the Park continues here at Baird Park through the month of September. Uh, at nine thirty AM. And on Wednesday, this is not on the agenda. It was missed, but there will be a board of auditors meeting on Wednesday, September thirteenth, right here at four thirty. On September fourteenth, the historical commission will meet at seven thirty at the Cadwalader House. On September twentieth, the zoning hearing board will meet at seven PM. That is a typo on your announcements there. It's not six PM. It will be held at seven PM. To discuss the two oh seven Andover Drive Side Yard variance and the Tilson Infrastructure AT&T, although. Will that still be? It will be, okay, all right. Um. September twenty-first, the Environmental Advisory Council will have their meeting at seven PM. September twenty-fifth, the Board of Supervisors will meet. Uh, here at twelve PM for our workshop meeting. We'll have another workshop meeting on this, our October second. At, here at twelve PM. Um, those are both talking about budget too, just FYI for the. New budget for next year. Um, on October fourth, the planning commission will meet here at seven thirty PM. And on October ninth, the board of supervisors will have their regular meeting at seven thirty PM here. Um, now I'm going to go ahead and open up the meeting for, to the public for comments. I do have some people that signed up, so we're going to start. With those, just to remind everyone that there is a three-minute time limit on comments, just to make sure that we can hear from everyone. Uh, so first up, I have Christopher. Marius? Manos?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm, uh, Christopher Manos. I'm actually a new member of the congregation. And, uh, it's my understanding that there are other, uh, businesses that have been granted easements and amendments to. The type of zoning, and I just think that in keeping with. The equal application of the law, it would be very fair and just to give our congregation. Uh, thoughtful consideration for this, uh, change. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Caroline Engel? Is Caroline Engel here?
Hello, my name is Caroline Engel. Um, live on Valley View Lane. And, uh, I've been on here, uh, several times, of course, uh, with concerns about the, um, Lionville Station Farm. And, um. Months ago, there was someone in the meeting who went, where I think, um. About a different topic and the situation escalated and there was a concern about like with, somebody, I think. Um, it said, was that a threat? Right, and I just want you to know that. Um. Two of my neighbors who were here about the, our concerns with Lionville Station Farm. Um, two of them on totally different, separate occasions said to me. That, uh, so this is for you, Mimi. Um, I just wanted to let you know that they specifically said to me. They were both watching very closely what that individual was doing. And they were both planning a route to be able to take him down if something were to happen. And no, no, no disrespect to the, the police officers here, but I just want you to know. That people care, even though we have a lot of concerns. There are people in the community here that are willing to. Protect others, and we know that it's the police officer's responsibility, of course.
Of course.
But people in the public here may have been closer, you know, and, and, um, so I would just want you to know that two people. Um, unsolicited, we, we just talked about, we are concerned about that situation that happened, and they're very concerned for you. And willing to step up and help out in any way possible to protect you.
Uh, well, thank you very much. It was definitely a very tense situation and. I have full confidence in the police officers that are here to maintain order in, in the, um, meeting room. So, but I appreciate everybody looking out for each other, so it's great. Thank you. Um, okay, so that's the end of my list. It was very short. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Just raise your hand and I can call on you. Over here, and if you could just come up to the microphone and state your name, please.
My name is Judy Docstater. And I live on Whitford Road and have lived there for fifty-three years. Um, I want to just say that my husband started Euclid ambulance in our living room. And look at what it has now grown to where we are protecting. And caring for the people of Euclid Township. And I feel very strongly that Calvary Chapel. Has that same sense of caring. That we do wonderful things in terms of outreach, uh, not only locally, but, uh, internationally. We do one meal where we feed our children in Africa for a year. We pack meals for them. We've packed meals for Ukraine. Um, we hold wonderful, um, studies and encouragement and support groups within the township that allow. Euclid Township residents to have that sense of belonging and belonging as a good neighbor. We'd like to be a good neighbor. And we would like certainly for you to consider. That the zoning change would allow us to safely park people, pardon me, people. On the same piece of ground that they're not crossing or doing something that put them at risk. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, sure, come on up.
Hi, I'm Toby Chadsey, uh, Byers Road. I just wanted to know, is there anything, uh, from Audubon? And the Lionville Station Farm? That has come up since the last meeting where the, where it was supposedly. Removed their, their sketch plan, so nothing, nothing new is.
There's, there's been no, no, there's been no new update since the remote, the withdrawal of their sketch plan.
Okay.
Uh, the rest is, is up to the school district, I guess. I don't know if anything's new with, on that front.
Made it clear that they, they will stick with this till, uh, the end of the earth, so. I guess, so I was just wondering if you've had any, also any conversations with the school district about. What could be possibly built there that would, you know, work for everybody, not just them?
Yeah, I don't think that would be appropriate at this time to, for us to. Because they're in a active agreement with the developer.
Yeah.
So it's.
So they would have to, to, to pull the plug on that to be able to talk to you about what could possibly. Be proposed for that property that would. Work for the community.
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Raymond Parolo, uh, four thousand three Franklin Court, Euclid Township. Uh, I've been attending Calvary Chapel, Chester Springs since two thousand and four, and I am in support of the zoning change. I know. It'll be a benefit. Our neighbor is here this evening. It's going to benefit him. Um, also I'm involved in a lot of different areas of service at the church and, um. Additional safe parking would be a very good thing. additional safe parking would be a very good thing. Uh, I'm on the security detail, so I'm out in the lot, a lot during events. And, um, you know, having the privilege of serving on Borough Council in Conshohocken from ninety-eight to two thousand four, I can appreciate the decisions that you make and thank you for what you do because I was on that side of the bench. Uh, I am in support of the zoning change. I just think it's the best way to go. And I'm pretty certain we can answer or actually satisfy the questions. I listened to the meeting. I wasn't able to attend the August meeting, but there were some concerns there and I'm pretty certain that we can come to an agreement. And I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Hello. Uh, my name is Jesse Woolenwafer. I live on Devon Drive here over across the street in Marchwood. Um, I'd, I'd like to talk a little bit about Calvary Chapel. I, I took the opportunity to watch the YouTube video of the last meeting and, and I understand some of the concerns. Uh, some, some of them that I noted were some tree clearing, uh, for the parking areas. Uh, maybe some, some landscape buffers, which sounds like you're in favor of. Um, you know, the, the acquired parcels don't have stormwater management now, and, and we've just heard that, that, that's an issue. Um, so what we have here, I, I think is really an opportunity to make some improvements. And as a, a practicing professional engineer, I know that the changes from the tree cover and land covers that can be managed and, and we can address those issues. Um, as far as tree clearing in general, that's, that's something that's important to me. I, I know the importance of it and I've helped plant hundreds of trees with the Brandywine Conservancy down Dallin Forge, right by Creek Road. Um, so as, as far as I can tell, we have an opportunity here that the Calvary Chapel Church and the township to, to come to an agreement on some zoning changes to make this happen for the benefit of us all, uh, as our local church community, as part of this much larger Euclid Township commu- uh, community. So I implore you to, to consider that change, the zoning change. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Renee Eckland. I'm a twenty-five year resident of Euclid Township. I do attend Calvary Chapel. I did review the August fourteenth meeting as well. Um, one of the things that I noted there was um, that the church was asked to consider alternate schedules. Um, I, you know, personally, I think that's unrealistic. That's not what churches do. You know, churches have services on Sunday mornings or, you know, based on the religious day of observance. Um, I think another proposal that was to consider, um, utilizing nearby parking. So there's the Eagleview Shopping Center. There's also the Dollar General, the former Walgreens property um, for overflow parking, um, and secure those agreements with those, um, owners, et cetera. Just if you've driven by there and you know that there's a road that goes through that, it's not a secure option in any way for people who have to walk back and forth. So that's not a legitimate proposal. Um, in my opinion, from a safety perspective, um, the other thing too, as I would just say, you know, I think the church has definitely exhibited and has always exhibited a willingness to really work with, uh, the neighbors and address all the concerns. So I think having a very actively willing, um, you know, participant is, is key to the conversation. So would support, you know, the conversion of the, uh, you know, from our residential to commercial.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jamie Woolenwafer and I live on Devon Drive here in the township. Um, we've lived here for about six years and I have attended Calvary Chapel for about eight. Uh, one of the things that actually brought us to the township was the close proximity to the church. Uh, we are active in the church, um, most Sunday services, um, and a bunch of other ministries that they have. Um, it is well attended. If you're in that area on a Sunday morning, you'll notice that pretty quickly. Uh, we have over two thousand people that come into the church over a weekend. Um, being able to meet the needs of the community, the families and the friends of the residents here, uh, of Euclid Township is very important to us. Uh, I've been an EMT here in the county for almost twenty years. Um, and so whether it's meeting the physical needs, the emotional needs, the spiritual needs, um, that is important and being able to, um, expand what we're able to offer and how we can support those around us is important to me. Um, and as a voting resident of the township, I hope it's equally important to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Julie English. Um, thank you for your time. I'll be brief. Um, I'm currently a resident of Euclid Township and have enjoyed living here for over ten years. Um, I've attended Calvary Chapel for nearly as long. Um, I'm here to support the church's request to expand the parking lot, parking area. Uh, over the years, I've watched the congregation grow. This growth is primarily due to several factors. Their church is open to the public and services, a diverse group of individuals and families in the congregation. Many reside in this township. The church's popularity, rapid and continual growth is primarily driven by the services and activities offered during the week, and especially on Sundays. The problem is the parking lot cannot absorb the amount of vehicles attending services. In conclusion, please consider helping all the residents in the congregation and the general public that are looking to take advantage of the services and activities, but simply cannot park because the spaces are all occupied. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. So. Come on up.
Good evening, sirs, madams. Thank you for hosting, uh, this event and help, for helping the community, uh, stay up to date on what's going on as well as have a voice. Um, I'm a resident of the township for eight years. My name is Jenna Dress. I live on seventy-eight Woodland Drive, really close to Devon Drive. Um, I would like to strongly urge you guys to, um, consider Calvary Chapel's proposal to expand the parking lot in fairness of the law. This is not the first time a proposal has come through, as you may have noticed, for the one proposal on three thirty-nine West Euclid Avenue to, uh, merge or like convert the R one zone to PC zone. It's not the first request. I would just ask in fairness with that request, you would consider this as well. I can also attest that from a practical standpoint of view, I honestly do believe expanding the parking lot would benefit the community as whole, especially as I've been a part of both production ministry, worship ministry, and children's ministry. Our parking lot is so small and so full when I have to chase after kids when they run out of the parking lot because they like to play Houdini. Um, unfortunately, there's like a lot of people just trying to get out of the parking lot because they want their Starbucks. So I end up having yank kids like, yo, no, you're about to get hit, right? So it's just like that. It's like the parking lot is getting too small. I mean, it's a blessing to see so many people interested in coming to the church to be community, but it's a little constricted. So I think with more space, it would allow the kids to run around for a bit or for us to at least bring them back to a space that's safe without getting hit by cars. I actually was a witness to an actual car accident that happened at the parking lot in which it was a bit too full. People was watching where they were going. One of my friends, uh, Wade Lamaro flipped another woman's, uh, van. So we had to actually wait in the parking lot to call the county sheriff. They sent one of their guys over like the cops. So we had to take a statement and stuff. It's just like, it's just like, there's been repeat occurrences of that, like week after week. It's not like every day, but it's like, it's like often enough where it's like, we could truly benefit from the space. And I am fully confident that we could still preserve like the green in the area to help it make it the urban area that it's supposed to be without like a dusty grimy cit- city. It will still be the township that we love, just improved and better. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Paulette Lamaro. I live on three seventeen Misty Autumn Drive. I walk to the church because a lot of times it's very crowded and hard to park. And it just so happens that my son was the one that got in the accident in the parking lot of the church because it was so crowded. So I thought I have a dual perspective of being somebody who likes to attend the church as well as somebody that lives in walking distance of the church. And I just feel like I can only speak for myself and the people that I know, but we feel that the church does so much good in our area. And there are so many things that, um, make it a great safe place. And I'd hate to see parking and, um, and the lack of being able to change that to affect a, a community um, that supports so much stuff in Euclid. So that's it.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Engel, Euclid Township. Um, I have a couple of questions. At, at the last meeting, when you read the letter from Autobahn saying they were taking back the sketch plan, uh, a gentleman stood up and, and asked you if this now opened the door to you uh, as board members, considering the possibility of making some tailored changes to the zoning of PIC so that we don't have to deal with the big massive buildings. Did, did I get that right? Okay. Um, and so my question is, uh, what is your process and timeline for starting that process of looking at zoning, changing the zoning, voting on changing the zoning and so forth? What?
We've already start, just to answer your question, we have already started. Uh, we start usually by looking at other ordinances around the area, places that have similar situations that we are looking at. And our zoning department uh, goes through those ordinances and we try and craft something that would work for us. So we are already in that process. And once that would be sort of finalized, that would go to a vote at, it would go first to the planning commission and then to us. So it's in the works.
And, and are there bookends for a rough timeline of how long that would take to go from, uh, research to a proposal of a new plan?
Um, we'll see. It took us about four years to do our chicken. But that went through a lot of back and forth. But I mean, in general, once it's in a, a really good draft form.
I, I can jump in. I mean, I.
There's timelines and stuff.
I, I mean, I think I don't have a specific timeframe for you. I think the challenge is looking essentially the, when, when you look at a, a township wide zoning and, and um, particularly something of this scale, and when you're talking about uh, this much property, um, you, you have to look at the township as a whole and you have to realize township, uh, for lack of a better analogy, is, is, is an ecosystem, right? So you start changing things and there's got to be, you, you have to provide, basically have to provide a sufficient amount of, of all uses, um, and that, you know, and that subject, there's a lot of debate about what does it mean to have all uses? And we could spend hours talking about that. But so one of the things that we're looking at while we're looking at zoning changes, what is not going to upset the balance of the ecosystem? So it's, I mean, it, so that to say, you know, I, I think it's, it's months, not years. Uh, but it's, it's really hard other than that to put a real definite timeframe on it.
So what I'm hearing from you saying is it would be reasonable to expect that within a year's time we might see something proposed.
I, I think that's yes. I think that's, I, I, I mean, that's a pretty.
To say it was all the trouble.
Yeah. And, and look, it's.
What are you doing? What are you doing? What are you?
And it may be that at the end, you know, that's going to be, there's, there's going to be something paired. There's going to be something, you know, looked at. Um, whether, you know, it gets to the next step, whether it ultimately gets enacted. You know, that's, I don't know, but I, I can tell you the council is working on it. I, I think within, uh, in, in less than a year, I would expect we know, you know, what the options are and what we're looking at if we're going to do something, uh, again, wh- what it is. But yeah, I, I don't, I, I, I think a year probably is, is more than enough time. Um, it's going to be famous last words that you haven't played the tape for me a year from now, but I'm just, no, but I think that's, I think it's, it's, I mean, I, I, like I said, I think it's months, not years. Um, I would, I would be surprised if we're sitting here a year from now, still saying we're working on something.
I'm, as a concerned resident, I'm just trying to the, the words, we're working on it and be perceived as something very opaque.
I, I can tell you that.
And so, yeah, anywhere where clarity can come, come through, we as the residents, or I'm speaking for myself personally, I would graciously appreciate that.
Yeah, no, and that's fair. And, and it is fair. And you're right. You know, we're working on it can be, uh, it has a whole spectrum. Um, right? So I, I understand the concern.
But even if we were able to have dates of.
Yeah. And, and the challenge is what, I mean, what some people are going to think is, oh, this is, this is a great alternative. Other people are going to say doesn't go far enough, goes too far. And that's, that's part of the challenge.
But as, as long as we can see the progression.
Yeah.
Then I think it would be a benefit for you guys as well as us so that it's not a constant, you know, tug of war.
Yep. Understood.
Anyway, thank you.
Yep. Thanks.
Are there any other comments or questions? Oh, yeah.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Burkard. I'm at five eighty-seven Cricket Lane in, uh, Eagleview. And what your comment about ecosystems, I feel like we have so much good use of open space here. But we have to care about our people. And I think we have to look at human beings and make sure that they're safe to be able to get to church when they need to get to church. And we are very caring about animals and open space in this township. So I think that um, it's an appeal to safety for our people. So I would appreciate it for Calvary Chapel.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Griffin and I live at four eleven Concord Avenue right here. And I've been going to Calvary Chapel for about eight years now and I have worked keeping and scape and around the building for a little while. And, um, I know the church cares very much how they look, how they present themselves. Um, everything is prayed over. And as a Christian, I am very pleased at my church. It's the first place I've ever been that I can actually be proud of my family. And I say that as my Christian family, but we do care about people. And I think we need to think about people. And it's important to be looking good and doing the environment. I get that. But I think as the days are, and we're not dumb, there's a lot going out there in our environment that is, people need hope. And our church is a place of hope. And I, I love to see that we can't find a parking spot. That means God's working and that's important to me. And it should be important for our community. Cause there's a lot of issues out there and they need churches. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
Hi, my name's Jessica Eamon. Um, I've been going to Calvary Chapel since two thousand eighteen and I started going by myself. Um, and since then, my whole family has been saved in more ways than one, um, my marriage too. And, um, I also have a special needs little boy. And he's a part of the special needs ministry and they do amazing things in so many ways. We're going to the aquarium at the end of the month. They're just taking us all. It's just a really amazing church to be a part of. And I would hate like for new people to move into the community that they go from church to church, try to find their place. And if the parking lot is so overcrowded, it could really deter them. And I would hate for any family to miss out on what Calvary Chapel has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? In that case, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
One sec.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thanks, everybody for being here tonight.